Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the November 13th, 2024 meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council. And our first agenda item, I believe, is pledge or roll call. Flag salute. Take it away, Tim.
Please follow me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Middleton is absent. Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft?
Here.
And Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Present.
Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, November 18th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. And this meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval.
I want, before, before we do that, I want to say that item nine will be moved to January, the next first meeting in January, first meeting in January. And also, if you are here for the Sunrise Tomorrow presentation, that also has been moved till 2025, date to be determined. So, not through our fault. Other than that, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second is amended.
Second is amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming November 2024 as National Lung Cancer Awareness Month.
I have asked Councilmember Schaefer to read the proclamation. There's no one here to receive it, but we'd like to read it for you anyway.
Thank you, Mayor. So proclamation of the City Council, or sorry, City of Citrus Heights proclaiming November 2024 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of death among men, women, and women in the United States and California, and according to the American Cancer Society, there was about 234,580 new cases of lung cancer in both men and women, and about 125,000 070 deaths from lung cancer in the U.S. And funding for lung cancer research trails far behind funding for research for many other cancers and additional research is needed in early diagnosis, screening, and treatment for lung cancer, as well as in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities. Incidentally, my dad passed away of lung cancer and he thought he had pneumonia. And so he failed to go see a doctor, so it was diagnosed in the advanced stages. Whereas screening for lung cancer for high-risk individuals can lead to the early detection of lung cancer and save lives, and organizations working in Sacramento County, California, are committed to education, educating people about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increase lung cancer screening rates in the United States of America. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim November 2024 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month, and we support those affected by this disease and encourage all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection. That's it.
That it?
That's it.
Anybody commenting on lung cancer? We commented on you. I'm sorry to hear your thoughts. We'll give you the proclamation and you can mail it to powers that be. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number five, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, recognizing November 11th through 15th, 2024 as National Police Records and Support Personnel Appreciation Week.
And I have asked Vice Mayor Lopez Taft to handle this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite the Citrus Heights Police Services Supervisor, Dan Stockridge, and the Police Department Records Unit to the podium to accept the proclamation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and City Manager Feeny. On behalf of Chief Turkot, Commander Frye, and Manager Tiffany Campbell, thank you for this meaningful recognition honoring National Police Records and Support Personnel Week. I'm joined this evening by my colleague, Senior Records Technician Katie Smith, and volunteer Michael Lager Marsino. Together, we are privileged to accept this on behalf of the Citrus Heights Police Records Team, a group of highly skilled professionals whose contributions are truly vital to our department and community. The role of a records technician has evolved tremendously over the years. Today, the work of our team extends far beyond indexing, filing, and copying. Our records technicians are highly analytical professionals who ensure compliance with complex state and federal regulations, accurately manage sensitive data, and provide crucial support to law enforcement operations. Their dedication and expertise are fundamental in meeting our community's records needs with efficiency and integrity. I would be remiss not to highlight Katie, who in just over one year successfully onboarded and trained over half of our team, and they are extremely highly functioning. Thank you again for this recognition and for celebrating the essential work of our records team. We are proud to serve this community, and your support means so much to us. Thank you.
All right. Well, before we join you for a ceremonial photo, we want to read the proclamation for everyone else to, to recognize you as well. Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, recognizing November 11th through 15th, 2024 as National Police Records and Support Personnel Appreciation Week. Whereas the City of Citrus Heights Police Records Unit and Support Personnel are forward-facing agency representatives aiding the community by providing exemplary customer service, and whereas Citrus Heights Police Records Technicians regularly exercise technical expertise in ensuring the police department remains compliant with federal, state, and local statutes, ordinances, and mandates surrounding records handling and statistical reporting requirements. And whereas the Citrus Heights Police Records Unit processes, reviews, analyzes, approves, and routes over 9,000 police reports each year and serve as the agency liaisons with allied partnerships throughout the region, state, and nationwide. And whereas the City of Citrus Heights Police Records Unit assists over 9,000 patrons in the police department lobby and by phone and electronic communications each year. And whereas we acknowledge and thank the Citrus Heights Police Record Staff and all records professionals serving our nation for their dedication and selfless service to all police personnel, community, courts, victims, and the public. And whereas the Citrus Heights Police Records Unit and Support Personnel are vital to caring for the Citrus Heights community and the members of the Citrus Heights Police Department with whom they serve. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim November 11th through 15th, 2024 as National Police Records and Support Personnel Appreciation Week. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you.
Comments?
Thank you very much for all the hard work you guys do. You make us proud. Thank you.
I don't think people realize all the hard work that goes into what you do, so it's good that we recognize you and understand that what you do is so essential to everybody's safety, that you're part of the records. Can we have a little photo with everybody?
Please, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm so used to this chair. I should have realized I'm with all the mess here. Okay, that was fun. Musical chairs. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment, and if members of the public wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you are called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and the mayor has the discretion to adjust the allotted time. There is a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time, and consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda.
Do we have any, other than my speaker sheets here, do we have any online or?
I do not have any this evening.
First, I'm, in keeping with doing proclamations and signings and all that, I'm going to first call Natalie Price. There you are.
Give me 30 seconds. Now we're ready to have fun.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember. Thank you for having me up here today. I am here representing Reach, and we are here to recognize some really good neighbors in the City of Citrus Heights. September 28th, October 4th was Good Neighbor Week. All of our residents were encouraged to participate by doing acts of kindness, be involved in some neighborhood activities, and maybe, just maybe, nominate their favorite neighbor for some recognition. We had 11 nominees, and I would like to read their names so that they can be acknowledged. Their names are listed at chgoodneighbor.com, and that website will remain up all year long, so bring them there and brag. But I would like to thank Forrest and Sue Allen, Alfred Sanchez, Sarah Wheeler, Trent Lucas, Mike Masterson, Amanda Adams, Gwen Friesen, Kathy Morris, Jeanette Salis, and Sue Yackey for all being nominated. Thank you for your contributions to Citrus Heights. You have made an impact on your neighbors. We had three top nominees, and I would like to read their nominations and call them up. Candidate A. This person has been keeping the Oak Avenue Trail clear of trash for years. They started doing this even before there were trash cans and pet bags available. Even when they were going through medical issues, they continued to help keep the trail clean. This person's efforts over the years have encouraged others to care for and help clearing the trail. I would like to recognize Jeanette Salis for her hope keeping the Oak Avenue Trail clear. Please come up and receive your Good Neighbor Top Three nomination.
I'm giving you one award for just being nominated, and then one for making it to the top nomination.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome to have a seat in the front row because we will be calling you up for a photograph.
All right. This person. Our city is a better place to call home because of the efforts of this person. They are like a little fairy of empowerment. They motivate and encourage those around us to be better, kinder, and more involved neighbors. They walk their neighborhood daily and stop frequently to chat with others to put a smile on their face. They are also a mighty advocate when needed. They notice the needs in the community and collaborate for solutions. They gather businesses and community members to rally around a cause, and they work physically in the local parks to beautify our community. They volunteer their time generously to sit on various community boards, and they take it a step farther by assisting other board members be the best they can be. They open their home for meetings, projects, and general neighborhood hospitality. I would like to recognize Ms. Kathy Morris as a top nominee for the Citrus Heights Good Neighbor Award.
There is two. One is, everybody got one just for being nominated, and then you got a special one for top three.
All right. Our last top three candidate. This person is an elder in the neighborhood. They are one of the longest-running residents on their street, and they are like the glue that holds everyone together. When the person who nominated them moved here in 2020, they came up and greeted them. They welcomed them to the neighborhood. This person bakes cookies and brings them to everyone's doors in the holidays. And they share about other neighbors. They don't gossip, but rather they advocate for each neighbor to all the other neighbors. They tell individual stories that help everyone to get to know them better. They act as a neighborhood historian. They are the ones that introduced everybody to each other and make them feel like they belong. They are a treasure to the neighborhood. I would like to recognize Sue Yackey as a top nominee for Citrus Heights Good Neighbor.
You're welcome. I'm going to hand you to me. I can walk this over. Thank you. You're welcome.
With that, I think I would like to invite my councilmembers down because she will be taking a picture, and maybe Dr. Jana would like to read the winner's name from her plaque over here?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll do that.
Since I picked her, right? Didn't I pick?
How the Good Neighbor nominations work is Reach ships through every nomination and comes up with our top three.
And then the top three nominations are forwarded to the mayor, and the mayor decides between the top three.
Come right here. I figure we can announce.
Oh, I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Lopez Taft to read this because my vision is not the best.
All right. For outstanding dedication to making Citrus Heights a great place to call home, this nomination recognizes that your efforts have improved the quality of life for others in the community. Thank you for being a Citrus Heights Good Neighbor, and this is for Ms. Sue Yackey.
I'm speechless. Thank you. These oranges. Thank you. This is for you.
Beautiful.
I would like to, if it's all right, have you step up front, take a picture with council, and then we're going to invite your fellow nominees up for a group photograph.
Wonderful.
I'm in here, I'm sorry. I would like to see again. Yes, clear. Ladies? If we can give everybody a round of applause.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. As you can tell by the proclamation for Ms. Yackey, you can see why she became the
top winner of this, well, I hate winner, all winners, but the top recognized person because when I got them, I didn't have names. I just, I read and I thought, she brings cookies. Isn't that nice? She brings cookies to people. That, that, that won me over.
And they're good.
I also want to point out something. Today is World Kindness Day. Did you know that?
I did.
World Kindness Day is celebrated throughout the world on November 13, 2024. First introduced in 1998 by the World Kindness Movement, World Kindness Day offers an opportunity to highlight good deeds in the community and the common thread of kindness. How timely is that? So, would you like me to comment?
Yes, I think we should agendize this for next year.
Okay.
I'll second that as a new agenda item.
And congratulations to the people. Natalie, you did a good job.
Rachel did a good job.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on here. Next, next speaker is Rachel Martin, Harten, Royal Stage person? You can say your name better than I can, so when you get there, it's lightly written.
It's the second time.
They say it right?
It's Harten.
Okay, good. And we do have your flyer in front of us.
Perfect. Well, like I said, my name is Rachel. I'm a staff member, a dance teacher at Royal Stage. We also have a theater space.
Is your microphone working?
Sorry. Like I said, hello, my name is Rachel Harten, and I'm a staff member, a dance teacher at Royal Stage. We currently have the theater space in the Sunrise Mall, as well as another studio that we just opened in Roseville. I'm here representing our group to, and to thank you for the generous grant disbursements we have received this year, and to let you know that the money was put to great use. With the city's funding, we were able to hold several Friday Night Shine events, which were community talent shows where anyone and everyone and every, anyone was able to come participate as a performer or an audience member. We saw everyone from elementary scholars presenting their own choreography, to adults sharing poetry, vocal performances, and we even had someone do magic tricks. It was such a special time, not only for our Royal Stage participants, but also members of the community that otherwise would not, we would have not been able to connect with if it weren't for this. This year, Royal Stage has also produced seven full-length musical theater productions, with the final two being performed this weekend and next. Our model is to accept everyone onto our productions regardless of their ability to pay. Everyone who auditions receives a role in the shows, and approximately 45% of our participants are on full financial scholarships. We also maintained a roster of over 22 dance, theater, and art classes split between our Citrus Heights and Roseville Studios. Once again, welcoming everyone regardless of their ability to pay the tuition costs. Royal Stage also was able to host a summer camp in Citrus Heights. In 2024 alone, we had approximately 700 participants between classes, shows, and summer camps. We have been incredibly blessed to exist in the City of Citrus Heights, and we are honored to be the only live theater group for all ages in this city. One concern that we do have is the inability to properly heat and cool our facility due to the high cost of replacing our HVAC system. It'll cost $20,000 to get this repaired, not to mention our lease in the Sunrise Mall is also up in April. We have concerns about whether it will be renewed, and if it is not renewed, then where we'll be able to exist within the city limits. We would be very grateful for any feedback or ideas regarding this issue, and our executive director is eager to meet with the council and city officials to find solutions to this issue. Again, we are very thankful for the incredible experiences that we have had, thanks to the generosity of the City of Citrus Heights. You should have a flyer in front of you inviting you to our upcoming productions, this weekend as well as next, as well as one final Friday Night Shine event. We hope that you will use your complimentary tickets and come celebrate the arts with us. Thank you. Questions?
Any questions or any, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The next speaker is Melissa Hayden.
Hello, everybody. I am currently, literally, working right now for our city to help the community get more spay and neuter appointments. And it's really sad to me that I am getting these calls constantly on the daily. I got a call about a welfare check and an apartment today. I went and found, rescued a kitten for somebody who had lost their kitten, and now I'm working for Spay and Neuter Clinic to help our community do better. Not one of these people will make, I'm sorry, I'm out of wind because I'm working here and trying to figure this out. Nobody can work with animal control anymore. With the supervisor in charge, Tiffany Campbell, she will not let animal control take cats. She has destroyed the TNR programs completely in our city. It is an abalination that our animal control officers are feared to do their jobs. They have been fired for medical conditions. And now I'm sitting here doing the job for them because it is not being done. No vet office will work in this city while she's in control. Not one rescue will work for this city with her in charge. They call me constantly, daily, to help do this. As most of you guys know, I, I'm supposed to be a dog rescuer. I now do help the city with TNR, getting appointments, getting the cats fixed, getting the cats trapped, finding the colonies, helping the colonies, who can feed the colonies, because I can't get any help from animal control. The only thing that I've ever gotten was the 40 TNR, thank you, and the 20 TNR from previous. And after that, I was shut down and threatened with three criminal charges for helping and saving an emaciated dumped kitten that was chipped to Citrus Heights. This can't go on any longer. Please, I know you're City Council, I know you guys have compassion for our animals. I'm on disability, this is not my responsibility, but my heart for animals is way too strong to let this go on any further. I will continue to fight for these animals, for the justice, for the compassion, for our low income, for our homeless pets. I just met, on my way here, I met with a homeless lady who's begging me to get her dog chipped and vaccinated. Why has she not gone to animal control? Why has she not called 311? We have paused now. We need the city to make a better effort with animals. They do not know about the panlukes that has spread. That was never mentioned, only I have. The mention of Bradshaw being our shelter just came out a week ago. Our people need to know that. Those dogs have been at Bradshaw for two months. Why people don't know? People don't know to call 311. They call me. I tell them, call 311, and I'll be out there in a minute. We need communication between our animal services and between our community so we can get those rescues, so we can get those vets, so we can make this a better place overall for our community. Our community needs to know vaccinations can be available through certain routes. I do have a minute and 21 seconds, so, I am talking fast. I'm trying to get this work done. I've been doing it all day. And this is to get more animals off our streets, that to be spayed and neutered so that this doesn't get out of control because I, you know, you know, each and every one of you know how bad I want this shelter, but I do not want this shelter to be a failure. I want this shelter to be successful by having TNR done ahead of time, and that's why I'm begging for a clinic, I'm begging for your help to get these things resolved and fixed. We did try, I did try to get the community to call 31, or not 311, the CSN, first of the month, Bradshaw, the two per household per month situation that we got when we got the Bradshaw contract. I wanted to let you know that over probably 30 or 40 people made phone calls. Those phone calls ranged anywhere from 300 to 700 phone calls not getting a single appointment. I myself called over 426 times.
the cats trapped, finding the colonies, helping the colonies, who can feed the colonies, because I can't get any help from animal control. The only thing that I've ever gotten was the 40 TNR, thank you, and the 20 TNR from previous. And after that, I was shut down and threatened with three criminal charges for helping and saving an emaciated dumped kitten that was chipped to Citrus Heights. This can't go on any longer. Please, I know you're City Council, I know you guys have compassion for our animals. I'm on disability, this is not my responsibility, but my heart for animals is way too strong to let this go on any further. I will continue to fight for these animals, for the justice, for the compassion, for our low income, for our homeless pets. I just met, on my way here, I met with a homeless lady who's begging me to get her dog chipped and vaccinated. Why has she not gone to animal control? Why has she not called 311? We have pause now. We need the city to make a better effort with animals. They do not know about the pan-lyux that has spread. That was never mentioned, only I have. The mention of Bradshaw being our shelter just came out a week ago. Our people need to know that. Those dogs have been at Bradshaw for two months. Why people don't know? People don't know to call 311. They call me. I tell them, call 31, 311, and I'll be out there in a minute. We need communication between our animal services and between our community, so we can get those rescues, so we can get those vets, so we can make this a better place overall for our community. Our community needs to know vaccinations can be available through certain routes. I do have a minute and 21 seconds, so, I am talking fast. I'm trying to get this work done. I've been doing it all day. And this is to get more animals off our streets, that to be spayed and neutered, so that this doesn't get out of control, because I, you know, you know, each and every one of you know how bad I want this shelter, but I do not want this shelter to be a failure. I want this shelter be, to be successful by having TNR done ahead of time. And that's why I'm begging for a clinic, I'm begging for your help to get these things resolved and fixed. We did try, I did try to get the community to call 31, or not 311, the CSN, first of the month, Bradshaw, the two-per-household-per-month situation that we got when we got the Bradshaw contract. I wanted to let you know that over probably 30 or 40 people made phone calls. Those phone calls ranged anywhere from 300 to 700 phone calls, not getting a single appointment. I myself called over 426 times, and I was one of two people in the city of Citrus Heights, I don't know why me, but thank you, who got two Bradshaw appointments, or CSN appointments, excuse me, for the two-per-household. So, I want you to know, it's not easy-peasy, it's not something that anybody can have. You have tens of thousands of people calling in at the same time, I'm wrapping it up, and just know, it's not two-per-household. This is two for the luckiest lottery winners who get it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah.
Buetti.
Beauty?
No, please, no.
No?
No, Buetti.
Buetti?
Yeah.
I like beauty. Deborah, you're up.
Thank you. It just takes me back to when the nuns would mispronounce my name. Good evening. I'm following Melissa, and I have a sort of a different take, but it's the same, it's the same idea. So, I was one of those people on Monday, the 4th, who tried to get those appointments. I don't know how many times I redialed, but you have, it's the first of the month, and you dial at 7:00 a.m., and you just keep doing it, and I didn't get through. And that was frustrating. So, that's how I wanted to start this. I actually took notes this time for you all. I want to remind you all that we here in Citrus Heights, we already have the hard part in place. You have dozens, if not more, people who give their time, and their money, and their effort to dealing with our homeless and at-risk cat population. I'm more of a cat person than, than a dog person. Citrus Heights has colonies, and you've got volunteers without even asking us, and we spend our own money, and we spend our own time, and we feed them, and we do our best to trap them and get them spayed and neutered when we can. Why? Because we have compassion, because the weather is getting nasty, because we don't want these colonies to grow any bigger. In fact, we want to start reducing them, keep them healthy, and reduce them. That's all we want, that's all we're asking for. I'm just reading my notes. And again, that's the hardest part. You've already got the volunteer crowd coming in, the way you have all these people doing work to beautify our city. New growth and solid roots. And I want to see that mindset for the, for the unable-to-speak animals in our city. So, I kind of only work in Heritage Manor, which is where I live. We have our own mini-colony, and I've personally done three, and I just ran across three more on one of my walks through my community. I'm looking at about $280 to spay and neuter and vaccinate these three strays that are in my property. I gotta drive to Auburn and back, and I'm on a pension, a retired teacher's pension. I'm 70 years old. It's a lot of money for me. And I fantasize about why Citrus Heights doesn't have something. You know, I listened to what Melissa was saying, I'm new here, I think, I've, I've been here before, this is my third year living here in Citrus Heights. Why can't something be started? Why can't Citrus Heights find vets that will work pro bono, or our animal care and control? Why can't we, you, move money from someplace to, towards getting us clinics to spay and neuter? I mean, in my mind, I'd be happy if you started with five a week, and God knows, it's a bigger problem than that. I don't understand. My last job, I was at a school, a public school in San Francisco, there were 1,200 students, 105 adults. I was on the school site council. I'm familiar with budgets, and I'm familiar with problems that seem unsolvable, and I know we can solve it. And there's way more important things in Citrus Heights, but not for us. For us, it's these baby cats in this freezing cold now and rain, dying, and getting pregnant, and getting sick when they don't have to. So, I guess what I'm asking is for you all to give it a little bit of your time and your consideration, to think about how we can accommodate five a week in the town of Citrus Heights, so that we don't have to drive to Auburn, or wherever these other places are. I still don't even know, still being new here. But it's frustrating for me. This seems like a city with a little bit of money and a lot of heart. We have all these proclamations. I know that there's a way we can make this happen. We have an animal care and control, I know we can make it happen. I think that's all I have to say. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item, please.
Madam Mayor.
I think the end of the speakers, unless there's some others.
Is that the end of public comment?
I believe so.
Can I speak to that for a moment?
If you would like to speak.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to say that our Animal Services Unit cares deeply for animals, cares deeply for service for the community, and we've, really, that team has worked diligently to improve service. Recently, we've gone to seven-day-a-week coverage, used to be five-day-a-week coverage. In addition to that, we've transferred from the Auburn facility to the Bradshaw facility that has service enhancements for the community, and we're continuing to look at service enhancements. So, here are the comments tonight. I just want to speak for our team that does care a ton, has been continuing to improve enhancements, and I know with our council, we're still studying what we could do more, but I also don't feel that the personal attacks are helpful for bringing solutions. And as city manager, if there's something that a member of the public would like to speak to me about, my door is always open to them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feeney. Adam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Councilmember Schaefer, you're up.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start out by saying, we have a city manager that's incredibly accessible. He is, just, I, I can't reiterate that enough. If you have an issue with, with a problem with the city, he is available. Okay, so, anyhow, moving on to what I've been up to lately. So, after our meeting on the 23rd, I attended the Home Goods grand opening. It was a pretty amazing store there. I actually, that's not kind of the store I would shop at. I'm, I'm good with Harbor Freight, or someplace fun like that, but I'm sure my wife will love Home Goods, she's already been over there. That was great. I also had a meeting with, a one-on-one meeting with our Regional Transit CEO, Henry Lee. It was a great meeting. We talked about some of the goals that we want to, to achieve with, with RT. I'm excited about being on the RT board. And then on the, on the 4th, I attended Sue Frost Community Meeting here. I think that the turnout was very, very good. We got to meet Rosario Rodriguez, I knew Rosario before. Rosario Rodriguez is the Sacramento County Supervisor for District 4, Supervisor-elect that she will take her seat in January. And this was Sue Frost's last meeting here, she's moving out of state as she retires, so I wish her well for that. And then on the 7th, I attended the Amazon Fresh grand opening. It was another really, really great experience. The reception that we got from staff there was phenomenal. It was really fun to go out and go and see all the stock, all the shelves were stocked. It was really, really a great experience there. I went back and shopped thereafter. My wife kind of forbade me to, don't you shop without me, so. And then on the 11th, I attended two Veterans Day ceremonies, the one at Sylvan Cemetery, which, thank you very much, Mayor, for a great, a great speech. And, and I, I am the, I'm a veteran myself, and I took it to heart, and I just want to thank the mayor very much for that. And then we went over to the Veterans Community Center and listened to Ben Ali Shrine Band, which, they were, they were great. It was really, really a lot of fun. And then, last night, I attended the newly sort of reformed, this is Arcade Creek neighborhood area, that's Area 4. They've adopted new bylaws last night, so they're on track for really getting back on board with, with becoming an active neighborhood area, and I'm, I look forward to hearing more from them. So, with that, that's all I had, Mayor.
You've been busy. Vice Mayor Lupus Tapp.
Thank you, Mary. I've been to quite a few similar events, so I started off on the 31st at the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting, and that's always exciting to hear what our business owners in the community are doing, and how they feel about what's going on in our community. And we talked about the Sunrise Tomorrow Plan, and they had a presentation as well that was very interesting. I also attended Supervisor Sue Frost's last community meeting, and again, the transition, I think, was handled very well with Rosario Rodriguez also attending, and, and making that very, very smooth community introduction. And it's bittersweet for, for us to, to see Sue going to a different state, but she's very excited about it. On the 7th, I also attended the Amazon Fresh ribbon cutting. I am also on the board of the Citrus Heights Chamber. It's always exciting to celebrate new businesses coming into our city. Following the very next day, I also attended, right next door to Amazon Fresh, you will notice, there is Club Studios, so ribbon cutting for that company. And if you have never visited, this place is amazing. It's got so many different opportunities for you to move your body and take care of it in a different way, and I think having it all in one place, which is their concept, is very attractive. So, check that out, or at least take a tour, just so you see what's going on in the community. I also attended the Veterans Day Ceremony at Sylvan Cemetery, along with the mayor, and I don't want to steal your thunder, so I'll only talk about my experience. I did principal for a day with San Juan Unified School District, and my school assignment was Woodside. I pay special attention to Woodside because it is the only school in my official district, and so I really loved hanging out there, getting to know not only the school community better, but also what we can do to partner as community partners together. On the heels of that, today, I had the pleasure of meeting with all the principals in Citrus Heights in their collaborative meeting, along with our absolutely stellar Economic Development and Community Engagement Department. And just furthering that conversation, you know, sometimes it starts with one school, but because we are unique to the San Juan Unified School District in that we are the organized city, and we have other objectives that we can, we can really enhance that relationship. That was a really, really great, productive, sharing meeting, and I think, I think they're really, really excited about what we can do together, and that's it for me.
I'm glad you went to that today, because that was good to hear that feedback. Yes, I was at the opening, opening of Home Goods. It is one of my favorite stores. I used to travel all the way to Elk Grove to use, then Folsom, and Roseville, wherever else. Also, you missed Trunk Retreat. We went to Trunk Retreat, and we had, I didn't realize how many kids there are that dress up and utilize the Trunk Retreat, where kids come and dress up. It was, it was a lot of fun. It was my first time there, it was a lot of fun. I've had two Monday with the mayors. I don't think we were lined up with people, I think I had one person one day, but, but we don't have office, we don't have office space, so we kind of utilize, started by Brett Daniels, on Mondays between 9:00 and noon, there's a little nook, little nook in City Hall lobby, where the mayor can sit and listen to problems one-on-one, and see if we can't help resolve them. We take compliments as well. I won't be there next Monday, I'm going to a smud lunch, but Councilmember Schaefer will be filling in for me, so if you're afraid of me, you can come next month, next week, and see him. But that's always good, and then I did go to the Sue Frost thing, and was impressed with, and hopeful, I think Rosario Rodriguez is going to step into Sue's shoes well, I think she'll do a good job. This was cute. On the 30th, we entertained about 20 second graders from a little school in Fair Oaks, and we took them on a tour through City Hall, and then we set up them and a parent here, and they get to ask questions, and it was a lot of fun. They were, that was fun. On election night, I volunteered two hours in front of the library, which was a disaster if you were trying to drive down Auburn Boulevard around 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock, but people could drop off their ballots, and it was a lot of people dropping off their ballots. Moral of the story is, don't wait till the last minute to drop off your ballots. I did go to Amazon Fresh, what a great store. It's going, it's, you can, you can put your items in the cart and scan them at the same time, and then you just check out the door. So, that's kind of cool, I thought that was pretty good. Did go to Sylvan Cemetery, Veterans Day, we, we recognize all our veterans. It was kind of a rainy day, but it was still fairly well-attended considering the rain. And then the, the other Veterans Center hosted the Ben Ali concert, which was very good. I was principal for the day at Arlington Heights, it's my favorite school that I, we don't have a school in, I guess I do have a school, two in my district, but I went there last time, last year, and I just think the principal there, Mr. Martinez, is just incredible, and I like, I like listening to his visions of learning for the kids, and inspires me to offer partnership opportunities with him and his school, and I hope that we do that throughout the, the next year, we have some opportunities to partner. This morning, I had my little sewer district meeting, and we didn't do anything, I always call it the scoop on poop, but it, we didn't do much, but I do want to announce that, you know, we have the Bufferlands, the, the part of sewer district's property that is dedicated to nature, and in May, they have the big event with, you tour the Bufferlands. But if you are one that loves to explore, the Bufferlands biologist is giving a one-and-a-half-mile walk around the seasonal wetlands, and you got to put your boots on in case it's muddy, and they look at water birds and waterfowl and all the wet habitats. Some of the walk will be in areas that are wet. Advanced registration is required, the event is free, but they have limited space, they want to know who's coming. They'll begin accepting reservations on November 30, so go on the SAC sewer website to make your reservations, and then there's a reference there on how to register. And more details will be emailed after you register ahead of the event. If I could walk one-and-a-half miles in the mud, I would be there first thing in the morning, but it looks like a great thing to do. And that's all I have. So, next item, please.
Next item, we have consent calendar, item six, approval of the minutes. Item seven, modifications to the residential large item collection neighborhood cleanup program. Item eight, amendment number five to street sweeping services agreement with Well Sweeping LLC. Item nine has been continued to a future meeting. And item 10, quarterly treasurer's report.
Does anyone want to pull any of these items for discussion or separate vote?
Didn't we already move item nine?
She mentioned that.
Okay.
But how about the rest of those items? Okay?
I would say adopt the, I moved that we approved.
Could, could, Councilmember Schaefer, could you just turn on your microphone, please?
I moved that we adopt the, move the forward, the consent calendar, less item nine, of course.
Second? Moved in second, it all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? None? Unanimous? Next item?
Next item is public hearing, item number 11. The subject is resolutions approving the Measure A Sacramento Countywide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program Nexus Study and amended agreement on operating protocols. There's a resolution to approve the 2024 Sacramento Countywide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program Nexus Study, and a resolution approving the amended agreement on operating protocols for the Sacramento County Transportation Mitigation Fee Program, and introduction of an ordinance, adding an article to Chapter 18 of the Citrus Heights Code relating to the collection of development impact fees for Measure A transportation improvements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Schaefer. Regina Cave, your General Services Director. This item before you is a continuation from last month's opening of the public hearing. It was continued under the direction to be able to digest the information a little longer and be able to make a sound decision. So, this item does pertain to the Measure A Sacramento Countywide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program. Again, a little bit of background, the STA is the administrator of the Measure A, which is a half-cent sales tax collected throughout the region, and it also includes, is part of the renewal, when it was renewed in 2009, included in an order. when it was renewed in 2009, included an ordinance for the Sacramento Transportation Mitigation Fee Program as a revenue source for the capital projects identified in the measure. The SCTMFP program, there was a Nexus study conducted in 2006, ahead of the 2009 measure when it actually went into place. And that Nexus study was then updated this last year and approved. It started in 2022 and was approved by the STA board this past June. And it also included operating protocols agreement that the STA board approved in August. And all of the agencies that are recipients of the Measure A revenues are required to not only adopt the ordinance, but impose the impact fees and remit those to the STA for distribution. So for the audiences in council's benefit to understand that the city does benefit greatly from Measure A, we receive about $3.4 million currently a year, and that money continues to increase as Measure A revenues as part of our sales tax in the region increase. There's also the capital component, which we have benefited from. To date, we have received funding for Antelope Road, which we've conducted or constructed various improvements along Antelope between Roseville Road and Auburn Boulevard. The terminuses of these projects are based upon what was approved by the voters back in 2004, when the measure was renewed. Additionally, we have Greenback Lane, which allowed for improvements between the west city limits, so just past Indian River, all the way through Fair Oaks Boulevard. And then Sunrise Boulevard was identified between Cianara and the north city limits. Again, we have our ongoing Measure A programs, which is where we receive approximately, for this last fiscal year, about $3.4 million a year. We receive about $2.8 in Measure A street maintenance, which we utilize those funds to address our pavement. So anything from our residential resurfacing to our annual resurfacing program, to our mill and fill program, to sidewalk modifications or improvements. And then we have our safety streetscaping pedestrian and bike facilities, and our traffic control and safety. We utilize those for those respective improvements, but we also utilize them to leverage as grant matching dollars for some of our larger capital projects that incorporate complete streets components. So here's a chart that's also reflected in the staff report in the Nexus study that shows what the updated residential development fees will be. It looks at the single-family residential, and it broke it down into various sections. I know that was a question inquired by the mayor at the last meeting, why there's so many different categories now, and that was to maintain or achieve compliance with AB 602, which requires a proportionate share of impact fees assigned to residential housing based on ITE, which is utilizing transit route, not transit routes, excuse me, vehicle routes, and how much traffic is generated for a dwelling unit. And then the non-residential, which are your commercial rates. They're pretty consistent with what was assigned before under the existing impact fees. Most of these fees are either status quo or slightly less, just based upon the ITE calculations. So before you are the recommendations, I apologize, I don't know why it says 111, but the recommendations as indicated in the staff report for approval of the mitigation fee program Nexus Study, approving the amendment of the operating protocols agreement with the STA, and then introducing by title and waiving the first reading of the ordinance. And I am here for any questions.
Since this is a public hearing, is it a continuation of the public hearing, so I don't have to reopen it, right?
That's correct. We extended it till today, so it's still open.
Okay, so you can still, guys, have any questions for Regina?
So I just want to clarify, and Regina and I had a discussion about some of the concerns that I had with trying to wade through and understand this report, this study. And if you could, do you have, probably, I don't, do you have figure one, or table one, or table two in your, I know it's in the agenda packet, but essentially...
For the projections, what the initial projections were?
So the initial projections were sort of a lesser point. I don't, still don't understand that particular chart, but it's kind of irrelevant at this point. My concern was, is it appeared, from looking at this, that we were paying into this fund, and other cities, I'm less concerned about what other cities are paying in, and how much we were receiving back. And so what's not included in the study is some of the historical information that Regina was able to, some background that she was able to provide for me. So I understood that the reason that some of these numbers appear sort of disparaging is because there was money, when Measure A was initially passed, that bond fund, some money was kind of upfront to some of the cities. And it was, again, when you started looking at, we are benefiting more than we're paying into this. So I think this is a, and plus, there's some other projects that I think are incredibly important. The Capital Connector that's going from Elk Grove to Folsom is one that I think will relieve a lot of the traffic issues that we have on 50. So in looking at this, I will say publicly, thank you very much for Regina, for your time and your patience with me. So I understood what this is, and my concerns are resolved at this point. So when it's time, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Do you have any questions, Vice Mayor?
No.
Well, I just want to say, we're not voting on the Nexus Study. That was voted on by STA last year. So we're voting on the mitigation schedule, right? That's basically what we're voting on.
Correct. We still need to approve the mitigation, or, excuse me, the Nexus Study, because it essentially is a Nexus Study, an impact fee for all of the region, including the cities. So we still do have to approve it.
We are? I thought that was done by STA last June.
They did, but the ordinance does require that each of the agencies that participate in Measure A are still required to adopt, approve the Nexus Study.
And for the record, I didn't have any issues. I looked at the fee schedule, and I didn't really, no major concern resonated with me with regard to the fee schedule itself. I just didn't understand. I can't, I didn't, wasn't, I was fine approving the fee schedule before, but I didn't understand what the Nexus Study, what they were trying to communicate there. Now I have an understanding of both. So thank you.
There's a lot of projects that say Citrus Heights that aren't done yet. Is that, are those projects forthcoming, when they pile up the dough to do them?
Correct. We do have allocations assigned between '24, '25, and this decennial, 2028, '29, to help fund launching of some of these projects, such as Sunrise Boulevard and Antelope Road. We do have plans for the Antelope Road overcrossing to provide pedestrian and bike facilities, safe facilities. We also have substantial sidewalk infill and complete streets along Sunrise Boulevard that have not been completed to date. So those are programmed in as well.
Because I saw that they hadn't been funded yet, and I thought, okay, so, okay, I have all my questions answered, too. So if you want to make a motion, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. Question for the city attorney. I see 1, 1, and 1, as far as the item...
One last thing. Do we have any public comment on this item before we go to a vote? Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, finally. Okay, public hearing's closed.
It's actually 1, 2, 3. That was my error when I was numbering on the slide and making corrections.
So we want to take these separately?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we adopt Resolution 2024, approving the 2024 Sacramento County-Wide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program Nexus Study.
The Nexus.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, you want to do the next one? Okay. Adopt a Resolution 2024, approving the amended agreement on operating protocols for the Sacramento County-Wide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And finally?
Okay, finally, introduce and title by and waive the first reading of ordinance number 2024, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, adding article to Chapter 18 of the Citrus Heights Code relating to the collection of development impact fees for Measure A transportation improvements.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, unanimous.
I think it needed to be.
I think that closes that item. Next item, please.
Our next item is Department Reports, number 12, and the subject is Community Engagement Projects Updates, since they have a few project updates that they'll provide.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember. My name is Marissa Brown. I'm the Communications Officer on the Economic Development and Community Engagement Team.
Good evening. I'm Courtney Riddle. I'm Marissa's colleague in the Economic Development and Community Engagement Department.
We do have a few items to share with you today, which we're very excited about. So we created a short agenda. We'll be going over Adopt a Trail, Neighborhood Area Toolbox, Neighborhood Area Mailer, and Volunteer Recognition. Adopt a Trail. Strategic objective for this year for our team is to explore opportunities to activate and encourage community ownership and pride by allowing community groups to adopt portions of the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail and Old Auburn Multi-Use Trail, and report out here. That's what we're doing. We created a program, and how this would work is that residents would sign up for Adopt a Trail via our volunteer hub and register hours there, so we can see them logged by different community members. And we also activate our volunteer hub in a new way as well. Once they sign up, they'd pick up a Chip In Starter Kit from City Hall with a variety of tools that we've gathered to help you in your volunteering along the trail. Once you pick up your kit, you go out and do the work. That's kind of what the whole process, it looks like. We heard it here today with our good neighbors. They're already out there doing the work. So what we wanted to do was make sure that we're meeting our residents where they're at already, and make it as simple as possible, but just enable them along the way with some tools and encouragement from the community in participating along our trails. So once people are volunteering on the trails and giving their time back to our community in this way, they can submit photos to us, and we'd happily share them on our social media or on our website, highlighting them as Chip In Champions. As part of this program and outreach, we created a new city trails website. So prior to this initiative, we did not have a website featuring our city trails. So now you'll find a Citrus Heights Trails that features trail etiquette, our volunteer hub, and the new Adopt a Trail program.
Okay, so I'll take over from here. So a little bit about the outreach that we did to get people to recognize that we wanted them to come out and enjoy this beautiful open space, and help support the community in keeping it clean, and helping, again, raise the awareness about the amenity in town, is we reached out to the individual neighborhood associations in REACH, coming to tell them a little bit about, you know, again, supporting the trail and looking to get them to support the Adopt a Trail program. We also reached out to the Sacramento Valley Chapter of the Native Plant Society. So while we were working on the Adopt a Trail program months ago, we took a nice walk with a few of their folks. They were trying to help us identify if there were any native plants that were growing in the area, so that we could add them to our website and to some of our brochures and our materials, just so that the community, while they were out exploring, could find the native oaks and some of the other wildflowers that were growing out there. So it was kind of a nice little trail walk with some knowledgeable folks about some plant life out there. We also did some meetup groups, located them online. They've got some walking groups that we reached out to, to let them know that the trail was a wonderful amenity in town, safe with beautiful lighting and great signage, and to get them to come out and support it. And also, the Chip In Day, as Marissa just mentioned, with the other local volunteer groups that are already organized and working in town.
So our Chip In Starter Kits feature some really great tools, and we're already seeing some support from our partners, our community partners. And it comes in a reusable bag, so we encourage, or don't encourage, single-use plastic, a See Click Fix flyer, so you can refer to different ways to report things you're seeing on the trail that may not be something you can fix, a trash grabber branded with Citrus Heights Cares, a trail brochure, gloves, which Republic Services generously donated, as well as trash bags and safety vests. They were here earlier, was hoping to say thank you, but thank you, Republic Services. A Citrus Heights Cares stickers, a bike flasher, in case you're riding your bike and cleaning up along the trail, a magnet, a cares guide, and an exciting new chip-in hat, which will be given to members who decide to chip in. So if volunteering and giving back to your community wasn't enough incentive, we've got a great little Chip In Starter Kit to get you going.
Okay. What you see in front of you right now are some examples of some of the signs that will eventually go out on the trails to highlight where individuals are along the trail, to give them a little bit of perspective about the length and the location, and some directional information about where they're headed.
Just a close-up of the sign. This is the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail sign. It matches our trail map and amenities that we have, in a handy little brochure as well, that's available on our website and in City Hall, if you'd like one. So it just is a good way for people to see a little bit about where they are, where they're heading, what city amenities might be near you.
We're struggling with these on and off buttons. Okay, a little bit about the Neighborhood Area Toolbox. Developing a Neighborhood Area Toolbox was a strategic objective of the City Council, and I've been working in collaboration with REACH in the neighborhood areas to put together a list of topics, things that the neighborhood area and REACH thought was going to be useful. And, oh, I'll go ahead and let you advance that slide. What was important here is our collaboration with REACH to co-author and co-create a list of topics that were going to be useful to some of the newer neighborhood area associations that are coming on board to support their formation, to support them with administrative tools, and also to just provide resources to the existing neighborhood areas, just in terms of administration, how to support grant writing. We, of course, want you to apply for the existing funding, and we wanted to be able to support any of their ideas of things to bring on volunteers, to coordinate those volunteers, and to get them to, again, do a little bit more, right, Natalie? So REACH was generous to allow me to bring this item to their board several months in a row, and they also nominated two folks from the REACH board to work with me on a working group. And we came up with a list of prioritized topics. One was new member outreach, to develop strategies to engage and onboard new members to the neighborhood areas and to REACH. The other was project planning, to provide them with some tools and resources to help them with event planning and project execution checklist. The other was connecting with community partners. This one was an important one, which is to help them branch out a little bit more, to connect with other nonprofits and businesses and other community groups, to support some of their events and activities that are ongoing. The next was grant writing tips. Of course, we want to support them in applying for grant funding through the city, and also not just our own funding, but to provide them with tools and resources so that they can reach out and apply for grant funding from other organizations as well. And then the last topic that the working group came up with was administrative support, providing them with templates for agendas and meeting minutes, things that would greatly help some of the new, John Kane from Neighborhood Area Four, as he's starting to standing up his neighborhood association, some things that would help him get going a little easier.
Our next item?
Our next item is our Neighborhood Area Mailer. So an additional strategic objective that we've been working on is to design, coordinate, and send a citywide mailer promoting our neighborhood areas. We've heard this desire from our neighborhood area leaders, and it's never a bad idea to share about the people in your neighborhood. So we're hoping that through this mailer, we can drive people to their neighborhood areas, and to connections within their local community, and ultimately, a better connection with their city as a whole. We do want to leverage the success that we've seen with our previous citywide mailers. We've sent out two this year, our Citrus Heights Cares Guide and our Save the Date Mailer, and they were extremely successful. They were sent in the first half of the year, and we continue to hear people who have kept them, shared them on their fridge, referred to them often for upcoming events. And so we are hoping to continue that momentum and leverage that. With the holiday season coming up, we do want to send this in January. That is our goal right now. Our timeline is that they'll hit our mailboxes around the week of January 6. And then you can see just a kind of reverse timeline here of what we're doing on our side in preparation to get them ready for the mailhouse. One thing that this coincides in, which I'll just tease here, and you'll hear more about tomorrow at our State of the City, a little plug there, if you're not planning on coming, you should. But we are proud to share that we will have an initiative in January called Neighborhood Area Awareness Month. And that is going to be all about driving our residents to our neighborhood areas and encouraging them to participate, get involved. Maybe they've been looking for ways. Maybe their New Year's resolution will be to get more involved in their local community. So we're excited to bring this incentive in this exciting moment of recognition to our residents through this recognition month. We'll get to more of that later. So here's just a quick draft of what the mailer currently looks like. This is... This is a draft, so it's got some information that might not be super accurate at the moment, but it will feature a specific neighborhood area meeting dates, times, and locations, QR code to a specific neighborhood area link that they find is best. So maybe they want them to sign up for their newsletter or they want them to drive to their website or whatever, their Facebook page. It could be anything. And include personalized photos, so that hopefully when you go to your first neighborhood area meeting, you run into a friendly face that you saw on your neighborhood area mailer as well. And a map of the neighborhood area, too. And these mailers will be mailed not just to everyone, but to everyone based on their specific location and neighborhood area that they live in. So if I live in Neighborhood Area One, I'm not going to get a mailer for Neighborhood Area Four or a neighbor, a mailer for all of the neighborhood areas and have to then go and find out which neighborhood area I'm in. I'm going to find out which NA I am by getting this mailer and by immediately being able to participate with the information that's on that mailer. So we're really excited that that's a feature we're going to be able to do and have essentially eight, nine different versions of of the mailer to go out to our residents. We're really looking forward to that.
I think we're down to six. Has people joined? You're into six?
Yes, that's a good point. With Area Four back, we got more. All right. Okay, that was all on the Neighborhood Area Mailer.
Okay, moving on to the volunteer recognition. So I do believe at a prior council meeting, there was a mention of an Unsung Hero Award. So what we're looking to do with volunteer recognition is to support REACH and the NAs and just anyone in the community that has signed up for our volunteer hub, the folks that work at our police department, just any and everyone who gives of their time and talents to supporting activities here in the city of Citrus Heights. So we're excited that we're going to launch a volunteer awareness, an unsung hero, so to speak, award and through the Citrus Heights Care Campaign.
So it's it's tentatively called the Citrus Heights Cares Champion. So we've mentioned our chip-in champions, people being volunteers that are out in the local community. And this one will be like the mega champion, for lack of a better word, our Citrus Heights Cares Champion. So it fits under our overall theme of our Citrus Heights Cares Campaign, which was report, maintain, chip in, and ultimately beautifying our city together. So again, meeting our residents where they're at, encouraging them to continue the good work that they're already doing, but just giving them a little recognition for the great work that they're already out doing. Our timeline for this is in the spring to coincide with Earth Day and Volunteer Recognition Week. So the nomination period would open in March and then we would add those nominees to the website and we would ask the community to vote. We've increased our community voting in the last year, I would say, to encourage people to get involved in the things that they're seeing on our community engagement levels. And it's been a lot of fun. We've seen it with City Scoop. And now we want to ask our community to volunteer for their favorite volunteer. And then we would host a, we would have Volunteer Recognition Week, which I'm sure you're aware of, and where we usually bring up our city volunteers and everyone to recognize them. And then we would have an event at the end of that week to ultimately champion, to award the chip-in champion, the cares champion. And then on the same day is a council meeting, so conveniently. It'll all be in one day. And year-round, we'd love to feature the nominees who were nominated throughout the process, highlight them, and just take any moment we can to appreciate the great work that they're doing. The event that we mentioned would be just a volunteer reception held during Volunteer Appreciation Week, all chip-in champions and City Hall volunteers. So whether you are at PD three days a week, you just volunteered on the trail for the first time, we want to recognize you. There's a place for every volunteer in our community and we hope that by recognizing them, they feel appreciated for their efforts in beautifying our city together. And then we would announce it here at City Hall, our chip-in champion, our cares chip-in champion. All right, that's all. Thank you.
We're here if you have any questions for us.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you were going through the mailer, I was thinking about all the businesses that are in our community that might want to participate in their their neighborhood area. I can remember that back when Area Five, we had Taj Joe Hall, who was owner of the 7-Eleven in that area. He used to come, provide coffee for all the meetings. I think that business owners might see an opportunity to say, hey, let's reach out to our our local neighborhood right here. And they have opportunities. And it's, quite honestly, it is a little bit intimidating to go and try to reach out to a business owner because you don't, if you just show up there at the store, will the owner be there? Will that, you know, are these times? But that's something that you might consider, that maybe some of the local businesses might want to be involved in their local areas.
That's an excellent point, Councilmember Schaefer. And one of the things that I've spoken with to REACH and to the NAs is what can we do to support them getting out and and using those networking opportunities as resources so that they can meet the the local businesses and invite them in and create partnerships? There's quite a few of our local businesses in town that offer community support types grants, similar to what the city offers. And it's something that I'm encouraging REACH in the neighborhood areas to consider applying for those grants and inviting them into their meetings as community partners and other resources. So that's a part of our toolbox. The write-up that I've provided for them to look at as a draft at this point and to get their feedback is is to support them in that networking opportunity to bring bring that synergy back that you're mentioning, to bring those businesses to their meetings and to work together collaboratively.
I think he's suggesting that you put them on the mailing list, right?
Yes.
Is somebody waving over there?
That was a considerate done.
A considerate done, thank you. I was looking at the toolkit and I thought, gee, she's getting rid of her grabbers. Those grabbers are great. Great for getting hats off the second shelf, you know, they're really good.
By the way, well done, thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Do you have any questions?
Just a comment, Mayor. I just want to congratulate you and thank you for your efforts here. I know, working with the neighborhood areas, they're they're doing amazing work and the newer ones really need the assistance that you have really outlined and thoughtfully put together. So thank you for doing that. And and I love the branding of chip-in champions and cares champions. So thank you for for the dream team of of creatives over there.
Thank you.
I have a question on the Adopt a Trail. Is it just the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail? Or how about the Arcade Creek Park Preserve Trail? Or any other trails that we have? Don't we have a trail up by Oak Avenue and there's other trails? Are we only adopting one trail or all the trails?
Our focus is currently on the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail and the Old Auburn Multi-Use Trail, but this program is open to any sort of trail that you want to adopt. And we encourage people to not just focus on one area. It can be one area, but it can be multiple areas. Or just when you're walking along the trail, you've decided to go from park to park. So can definitely, and Mitchell Village Trail, I know, is a smaller sub-trail of ACCT. So we're definitely open to getting more.
Isn't there a trail behind the library, too? Is that a trail that goes behind the library? Is that a trail?
I'm hearing some no's from the audience. I'm not familiar.
Whatever. There's, isn't there a trail behind Costco? That's a trail, right? So maybe people don't want to go over to the east side of town and they just would like to stay in their neighborhood and there happens to be a trail in their neighborhood. And so I think they could be able to be trail adopters in their own trail.
Absolutely, I agree.
I think it's a great idea to adopt a trail. I think it's a great idea. Do they adopt a section?
They don't have to adopt a section of the trail. It can be the the area that you maybe frequent the most that is near your house. But if you frequent the dog park, you can go to the part of the trail that's near there. Or if you walk all of it every day, pick a, pick every part of the trail. Not going to limit you.
I did not know that we had a Citrus Heights Dog Walkers Group. Are they related to Pooch?
I don't think so. And you you can find their information on the website. So I did a little search and that's how I found a lot of these.
Pooch is an organization, the Pet Owners Organization of Citrus Heights. I did not make that up. Okay. Okay, so this is great. I think this is, and we're going to address some of this tomorrow night at State of the City. So to let the community know that this is available. I have a question of Mary Jane, though. You, you the person who wanted to do this hero, unsung heroes? Is this meeting your wants? Did you have different kinds of heroes in mind?
Yes, this is, this is exactly what we had a conversation about. So I am so excited to see it coming to life, having a date where we can really celebrate our unsung heroes, those who do the hard work of keeping our neighborhoods welcoming clean and Citrus Heights continuing to be a great city to live in.
I just want to make sure that this was what you had in mind.
Yes. Yeah, we're happy to hear that.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I think this is great. I think, and I I think we should do any, if future, we don't have a lot of people here. So maybe when we have a real crowded meeting, you could bring it up again, even as a department report, just to let people know that it's out there. Okay. I know you do social media very well, but.
Thank you, yes. We'll be sure to share all of this, yeah, in our different communication channels, our e-newsletters, on our website, featuring social media, like you mentioned. So we'll make sure all this information is out and about to anybody and the channels that they they're on.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good to go for the next item, please.
Next item is City Manager Updates.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Ash Feeney, your City Manager, and boy, a lot of exciting things coming out of that update. Looking forward to seeing those launch and also hearing more about them at State of the City tomorrow night. Speaking of State of the City, we've got a few upcoming events that I wanted to touch on. That's tomorrow night here in this council chamber and it starts at 6:00 PM. The Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce is hosting a welcome reception beforehand. That is a ticketed event and that starts at 4:30. The State of the City is a free event, starts at 6:00 PM, open to the public. And come in and hear from the mayor and myself about all the things, great things that are happening here.
And we've worked very hard on our talks.
That's right, that's right. And then we also have a Badges with Buckets event that is going to be held in conjunction with Miller's Ace Hardware. It's benefiting Special Olympics of Northern California where Citrus Heights Police Department and the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department are partnering on this event. And so that'll be held on Thursday, November 21st at the corner of Madison and Fair Oaks Boulevard where Miller's Ace Hardware is located. And there'll also be some events in the parking lot.
What do they do? What is it? I was reading that and I thought, what's a badge with the?
It'll be similar to what you've seen with the Fill the Boot campaign that occurs on Sunrise and Greenback. But this will be held at the Fair Oaks in Madison. And there'll be also some informational booths within the Miller Ace parking lot area, where this also handles ice cream, pastry heaven, all kinds of stuff.
Is it all day?
It, we are going to get more information out on that. I believe it's on my calendar, which I can pull up. It starts at 10:00 AM.
Okay.
Ten to five, all day, ten to five. So, thank you, City Clerk fam. And then we, of course, have our annual tree lighting, our holiday tree that will be lit on the evening of Thursday, December 5th. And the festivities start at 6:00 PM. So we've got, the teams have been working hard on putting on a terrific event. That's one of the faves here for the community. So encourage people to turn out for that. Just a couple of businesskeeping items. Thanksgiving holiday closures. City Hall will be closed on November 28th and 29th. Our City Council meeting will not be held in November due to the Thanksgiving holiday week. The next City Council meeting will be, though, on December 11th. That concludes my updates. Actually, I have one other update that I would be remiss in not mentioning. And I know I've shared this with the council, but for the community, we did recently close escrow on the Old Auburn Buildings. That was a former preschool that I've spoken to this council about and presented on at past meetings. So that escrow closed on October 31st of this year and that definitely presents some future opportunities for enhanced service delivery here within the city and also control of our own destiny relative to escalating costs that have occurred around contracting out on some of the animal services. And I'll speak to that a bit at tomorrow night's State of the City as well.
Can council, council get a tour?
Absolutely, we can arrange for that. Would love to have you. And that's on the docket.
Very interested in that.
Yeah, we're going to be.
The little toilets are just high off the ground.
We definitely have some work to do with some of the restrooms. But I'd love to give council a tour and I'll be reaching out to each one of you for that.
Great.
Ash, a question for you. For our December 11th meeting, will that also include our swearing-in of our new council member?
Yeah, great question and it absolutely will. That'll be a night where our new council is seated. So I definitely encourage the community to turn out and celebrate that.
Next item? Is there any other items? Item.
So the next item is items requested by council members and future agenda items.
Anything? Anything? We're good to go. The next item looks like adjournment to me. We're adjourned.